I didn't know that.
How are you doing?
Wonderful, Ms. Brashaw.
How are you?
Thanks to see you.
Not much, just busy. I'm sure you have been way, way busy. I haven't been so. I'm sorry to sign up for the prayer booth, but I had a couple of really busy weeks here and I knew I just couldn't do it. I'm glad I didn't.
If you get Dennis those twenty, like just down one, then nobody's there.
Did I? Had done it.
Wearing a brace or whatever.
Is it cool?
It's like a wet cave.
I was kind of glad I didn't.
Yeah.
We had family come from out of the area too.
Yeah, it's like a basement. If you had water in your basement.
Well, it's for the concert.
Just up the sidewalk. The whole length of their building.
My husband, it was really.
Yeah, it doesn't go across. It comes out to the edge of the street.
Oh, so it's sitting on now. Um, the dirt area was only about.
Is there a place?
And then the over village, the further one.
Okay, beings at six o'clock. We'll have Pastor Dan, could you give the invocation, please?
Dan Mysick, Ignite Church. Like to read from Romans, Chapter thirteen, before leading in prayer. It says here, "Every person must submit to and support the authorities over him, for there can be no authority in the universe except by God's appointment," which means that every authority that exists has been instituted by God. So to resist authority is to resist the divine order of God, which results in severe consequences. For civil authorities don't intimidate those who are doing good, but those who are doing evil. So do what is right, and you'll never need to fear those in authority. They will commend you for your good citizenship. Lord, I just thank you that I stand before a council and administration who knows you. And, Lord, I just thank you and I honor them for their service in the community. And, Lord, I just thank you that you give wisdom and guidance to every decision. And, Lord, I know that it's very difficult to come to a place of agreement in very difficult circumstances. Many problems are very difficult to solve. But, Lord, I thank you that you are giving wisdom and insight to solving very, very difficult problems. So, Lord, I just thank you that you are granting a new level of wisdom for safety of those in the community, for those who are putting their lives on the line each and every day. And so, Lord, I just honor each person who is a public servant. And, Lord, I just thank you for those who are even working behind the scenes, who are making things safe in new ways, Lord, that they're speaking forth words of life. They're encouraging people. They're helping them to be on the right track. Lord, I just thank those who are guiding the youth today. Lord, I just pray a special grace for them, that they would have patience with the youth and our new generation. So, Lord, I just thank you for the honor that is here tonight. It's in Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. So now it's six o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderpersons Clem.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brashaw.
Here.
Keister is absent.
He just walked in.
Keister is walking in. Chesney.
Here. Okay, and if you could join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Ross.
A pledge of allegiance. Here with the flag of the United States of America and to the public, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved. Second.
A motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Clem. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the June 18th, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Keister, for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments. We have three different public comments. Steve Carroll.
Okay, I'm Steve Carroll, and this is about ordinance 218-33. And it's the letters to you guys. This proposed ordinance is designed to stifle any dissent, whether it is in written form or spoken at this podium. It has been brought on by a letter that I had written to the council that was read on the floor of the council, the content of which was no different from what I would have said at this podium. And to clarify things, I've only written one letter to you guys. Now, the reaction of this council is to stifle any written communication from citizens. It also must be said that I filed a request for review with the Public Access Council for a violation of the Open Meetings Act. This was done last December. This issue is now still under review. Anyone wanting any further information on this, let me know, I'll get it to you. The city's response is very interesting. The council now plays favorites with public comments. If you are a favorite of the council, the rules don't apply. This happens on a regular basis. There is ample video evidence to support this, some of which has been already sent to the PAC office. If you are not a favorite of this council, such as myself, you could face possible retaliatory arrest. There has been a recent Supreme Court ruling on this. This year, as well as early next year, we will hold elections. To any and all current and future candidates in this room, people are watching this, and your current and future political opponents are busy slicing and dicing YouTube videos. This is called accountability. You, of course, have a choice with this ordinance. Do you want open and accessible government, or do you want the Nixon White House? Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Teresa Wellman.
Hi, I'm Teresa Wellman, Word Six. I was here at the June 18th meeting, expressing some concern about 2018-33. And I was looking at the revision that Councilman Clem gave me, the revised one again here. And I originally came to say I thought the revision addressed a number of the concerns that I brought last time about accessibility, for folks being able to send their letters in advance, to ensuring that all the aldermen receive those communications, and that it wasn't channeled through a particular one, potentially stifling that. And the fact that the original amendment had a copy attached and made part of the meeting of the minutes, which I thought was pretty good open transparency. So it compelled me to come back and say thank you for coming up with what I thought was a pretty good compromise. Councilman Clem just gave me the latest rewrite that's different from what I downloaded 20 minutes ago, and that also addresses most of those concerns about accessibility. And certainly, it addresses some of the things we talked about a couple of weeks ago, about screening some of those if they were inappropriate communications. But it does leave some subjectivity in the audiences, maybe what's personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or libelous. So I might implore you to include this statement that says correspondence placed on file to City Clerk's office and copy attached, and make part of the minutes of the meeting. I mean, that would kind of address not having to read them here in your minutes, but also keep them open and transparent if somebody wanted to look at those meetings and see what someone had sent. So, again, I wanted to say thank you for addressing it deeper from our conversations at the last council meeting.
Thank you. And last is Dan Mysick.
Thank you, Dan Mysick, 338 Evelyn. So I also wanted to express support of this ordinance as it's written with amendments. It also, from a perspective, any time the council is bringing forth a measure that governs itself, I believe that the people should have a voice in that. And I do want to share support in reading this, that it is written in such a way to line up with other, what other councils have chosen to do, and seeing that Manager Crowe has done some research on this, and has found similar ordinances in 20 other locations. I just wanted to say, it looks as though this has been very well laid out, to address it in a similar manner. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Item number four is the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature unless there's a member of the council that would like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there anything that would be removed, council? Seeing none, we have, A, the approval to receive and place on file the fire department report, April and May of 2018, minutes from the Foreign Fire Insurance Board from the meeting of June 14th, 2018, minutes from the Liquor Commission, rescheduled meeting on April 12th, the regular meeting on May 10th, and a special meeting on May 31st, 2018. The approval of resolution R. 2018-36 for the temporary closure of streets for the Freeport High School homecoming parade set for Wednesday, September 26th, 2018. The approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $731,548.62, and the approval of the payroll for pay period ending June 23rd, 2018, in the total of $480,395.21. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Smith, for the approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Okay, well, it is my honor and privilege to make a proclamation on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. Tracy Anne, could you come up, please? If you can just stand there and face the camera, that would be great. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas Habitat for Humanity is a global nonprofit housing organization working with local communities across all 50 states in the United States and approximately 70 countries. Habitat's vision of a world where everyone deserves and has a decent place to live. And whereas Habitat works together towards their vision of building strength, stability, and self-reliance in partnerships with families in need of decent and affordable housing. Habitat homeowners help build their own homes alongside of volunteers and pay an affordable mortgage. And whereas Habitat seeks to put God's love in action, bringing people together to build homes, communities, and hope. And whereas the labor of volunteers and partner families, efficient building methods, modest home sizes, and no-profit loans make it affordable for low-income families to purchase Habitat houses. And whereas Stevenson County Habitat for Humanity is in need of volunteers and funding, funding that will be used only on the purchases of Habitat homes. And whereas the Freeport community recognizes the importance of having a Habitat for Humanity affiliate in Stevenson County, so now therefore I, Jody Miller, Mayor of the City of Freeport, by the authority vested in me, do hereby on behalf of the city council congratulate you, Tracy Anne Reynolds, the Executive Director, and her staff for their dedication to establishing this affiliate for the betterment of our community, for drawing attention to the continuing need for affordable housing, and inspiring action to address those needs." So thank you, Tracy Anne.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, City Manager Crowe, city council members, all of you here, for this proclamation. It is a very honor to receive this for our staff and team members. We would like to thank you and all of our citizens of Stevenson County for your support in such a great cause. We currently have 13 Habitat homes located in the second, the third, the fifth, the sixth, and the seventh wards. As you can see, we are diversely integrated across this city. As a nonprofit, Habitat for Humanity operations such as our Stevenson County Habitat rely on the residents in our communities to help sustain our efforts. Only through local donations and volunteers are we able to accomplish our mission. Thus, we are asking all the people of our surrounding businesses to partner with us. We are in need of local companies to donate materials for our projects, the materials that we use to build those homes. Some of those items are drywall, flooring, cabinets, light fixtures, windows and doors. Remember, our homeowners are purchasing this home. By committing to a 20-year mortgage, they are investing in this community as well. Our team, we are dedicated to making sure everyone has a decent place to call home, but we can't physically do this by ourselves. So every contribution helps, be it a few hours swinging a hammer or even $10. There is no time like the present to pay it forward. Across Stevenson County, there is a need for both our services and the community's support. I appreciate you allowing me to share with you some of our needs. Thank you so much again for demonstrating your faith in our organization and issuing us this proclamation.
Thank you, Tracy Anne.
Josh? Hold up here. This is your certificate of service. It's for five years. The service is actually on July 8th, so we're given a little bit early here. So hopefully, nothing happens between now and July 8th. So, but congratulations.
Thank you.
And, oh, the picturing. Didn't actually happen unless there's proof. Congratulations.
Thank you, Josh. I just want to congratulate on Josh just a little bit. And I want to talk about Josh. I'm very proud of Josh. Josh came to us by way of Lena and then Blue Island, and then we got Josh. Many people maybe recognize Josh as he's a neighborhood watch coordinator, so everyone's familiar with your style, Josh, and the way you approach people. Josh, if I had, if I could put together the components to make a police officer, they would be Josh Lovett. And I'm not saying that just because he's been here five years. Josh has a great blend of aggressiveness, yet he can talk to people. He has a great style, Josh. And I hope that a lot of these young guys look up to you. And I'm going to say it here, because it's going to be on YouTube and probably memorialized, but I really believe, Josh, you're going to rise high in Freeport, and I really hope your decision made before you, all right? But, thanks, Josh.
Yes, thank you, Josh. And Chief, just so you know, Josh claims to be the fastest guy on your team.
I'll tell you, I mean, he'll surprise somebody. He is very fast.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, on to item number seven, which is the second reading of ordinance 2018-33. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance amending Title IV legislation, Chapter 220, Council, Section 220.10 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport regarding rules of council.
Okay, Alderman Chesney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a little bit of background on how this ordinance came to be. The original ordinance was silent on the issue of public comments as related to written comments. The mayor put forth a proposal that included profane and slanderous remarks. However, it stayed true to the conversation that was about written comments, which was largely silent. We have, I have proposed an amendment to this in light of the concern that Alderman Clem brought forward. Unfortunately, there are people in this audience that want this city council to fail and make political points out of something that is largely routine in nature. I don't believe at any point in time, any city alderman or the mayor had had or wanted or attempted to limit public access or public comment. So in light of those concerns, I have a proposed amendment that addresses public comment as it's specific to written comments. And this is largely in line with what we have allowed in practice, but not in ordinance, for as long as I've been on the council, and I suspect as long as Tom's been on, which has been nearly a decade, which reads in such that I'll have the Madam Clerk read in the amendment that I'll propose to the council. The Cliff Notes is, is that it's going to allow written comments, no different than before. Any abusive, profane, or libelous statements can be struck from the record at the request of the chair. If the council believes that that is not the correct path, they can, no different than in public comments, they can request a vote to have that ruling overridden. So this is largely routine. I think we spent enough time on this. Nothing will change. No practice will be different. We want the public to be heard, and this addresses these issues in much more detail. And I hope the council, as well as the mayor, will approve this amendment as presented.
Discussion. Alderman Clem.
Madam Mayor, no, I think, I first appreciate the people that have come forward and talked about this. And there is a great difference in the councils throughout Northwest Illinois that, in the way they allow public comment or written comment. One of them, for example, is if you want to speak to the city of Rockford, you go fill out a form on Thursday about what you're going to talk about, and then you come back on Monday night and you talk about it, if they'll let you, you know, one of those deals. That isn't what we're looking for. And Alderman Chesney and I, all of us went back and forth the last time, and the main census was, look, we need to get someplace and make this work. We don't need to go through the fireworks thing again and all that kind of stuff, but we want it to be where people can come forward or send a letter if they can't make it, and also that letter will become part of the minutes and everything else. So I believe this compromise that you're going to hear, the amendment that you're going to hear, I think pretty well takes everything into consideration and overall is a good result.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
And I would just add, Alderman Clem, that the proposed amendment actually expands by ordinance public comment, does not restrict it.
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yeah, I just want to say that initially I was concerned about this, because by doing away with correspondence, written correspondence, we are limiting, to some extent, people's ability to contact their governing body. And I think this is a very good compromise. I think it accomplishes what needs to be accomplished, allowing the letters to be read, and I would be in favor of moving it forward.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
If I can make one more comment, if I could, and that's really to thank Alderman McLanathan. I reached out to Alderman McLanathan over the weekend, and we discussed a couple of things that are, we talked about a couple of parts of it that I thought needed changing, and through his leadership and working with everybody, the things happened, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Yes, just with this, it gives some discretion to the Chair of what is considered abusive, profane, libelous. I'm just wondering, maybe this would be a question for legal counsel, though, are we opening ourselves up if, you know, we were to not read a letter because of that for any sort of action against us for violation of Open Meetings Act? You know, someone could say that we didn't read their letter and they didn't feel it was abusive or anything. Is that going to open, is this going to open us up for anything there?
There is no requirement under the Illinois Open Meetings Act for you to, there's no requirement that a city has to read written correspondence into the record. So what this statute does require for public comment is that you allow an individual an opportunity to speak during your village or city council meeting at the time in which it is called out to do so on the agenda, but there is no requirement that you have to actually read in any written correspondence. With regard to any cause of action, I suppose someone could always argue if their letter wasn't read in its entirety, that the city council violated its own rules by not reading the letter in its entirety, but then again, it would become an issue then for the trier of fact, the judge to determine whether or not the city's decision to not read parts of the correspondence because it violated the city's own rules would then be an opportunity then for that judge to make that determination, but it would not be an Open Meetings Act violation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
I'd like to make a motion to place the amendment on the floor. If Madam Clerk could please read that in the record.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Chesney, seconded by Alderman Clem, for the motion to add the amendment. Madam Clerk, could you please read that amendment, and then we'll take the vote.
Paragraph 23, addressed by nonmembers. Any person not a member of the council or officer of the city may address council in bold at a public meeting, standing, or special committee, back to regular case, in accordance with the following rules. He or she shall rise, if not physically impaired, added in bold, approach the podium and speak into the microphone, stating, back to regular, his or her name for the record. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No person other than the alderpersons and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the chair. No questions shall be asked of an alderperson except through the chair. Any person making personal, impertinent, abusive, added in bold, profane, or slanderous, back to regular, remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council, shall be forthwith evicted from the chamber by the chair. The following sentence is added. The chair will preserve order and decorum, and the chair reserves the right to halt or suspend the public meeting to a later date if the rules are not being followed. The next entire paragraph is added in bold. With regards to any written correspondence addressed to the city council which is received in advance of a public meeting, the chair shall read the correspondence that was received and state the name of the sender. No personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or libelous statements shall be allowed, and the chair may refrain from reading such portions of the correspondence that are personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or libelous. The reading of any piece of written correspondence shall be limited to two, three minutes unless further time is granted by the council. There shall be no more than six pieces of written correspondence read on any issue. If there are more than six pieces of written correspondence, then each side will be granted the same number of pieces of written correspondence to be read. Any written correspondence addressing an item not on that meeting's agenda may only be read during that portion of the meeting designated for the same. Paragraphes A, B, and C remain unchanged.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the amendment only?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. I just want to note that last half of that second paragraph corresponds with the requirements that are also in place for written comments. Is that correct? Thank you.
Any further discussion?
If I said written, I meant spoken, but.
Seeing no other comments, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the amendment only?
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
The amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Now before you is the amended version of ordinance 2018-33. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the passage of this ordinance?
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
The amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Now before you is the amended version of ordinance 2018-33. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the passage of this ordinance?
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
Manager Crowe.
Madam Mayor. This is the yearly requirement to pass prevailing wage. We have to pass it by no later than the 15th of July and place it on the record as to conducting of work within the city.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
Motion to approve.
Actually, we don't need it.
Oh.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Just basically, this is nothing more than a housecleaning item that's done every year because of prevailing wage unions, the people that bid on the projects and everything else. So this is something that's really just, at the moment, rolled over every year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage of ordinance 201834?
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
And that passes eight to zero.
Item number nine is the second reading of ordinance 201836. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance of the city of Freeport amending Part 10 Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code Title II Streets and sidewalk areas of the city code of ordinances to provide for the regulation and application of small wireless facilities.
Manager Crowe, did you have anything to add to this ordinance?
No, Mayor. I know that at least two other communities within the state of Illinois within the last 10 days have passed the similar type of ordinance that was recommended by IML.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage of ordinance 201836?
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 10 is the first reading of ordinance 201835. Could you please read this?
An ordinance granting a variance from Section 1268.07 pertaining to maximum height of accessory buildings for property located at 727 South 15th Avenue, Freeport.
Thank you. Director McDonald.
Thank you. On May 18, 2018, an application from Luke Schoenhard of 727 South 15th Avenue in Freeport was filed with the city of Freeport's Department of Community Development for a zoning variance. The relief sought by the documents on file is to allow for the construction of a garage nine feet higher than city code in an R4 one-family zone district. Compliance with city ordinance, all adjacent property owners received a certified mailing of the notification of public hearing to be held on June 7 at 5:30 PM at City Hall. Notification of the public hearing was published on the city's website and in the Freeport Journal standard. An application has been kept on file in the department, and no protests or comments were received prior to the public hearing. Findings of fact, the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this zoning code, and that allowance of the special use of the property in such a manner as proposed will not constitute a nuisance or other obstruction to neighboring property. Strict enforcement of the zoning code would result in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions, which are not generally found on other properties in the same zoning district, and that the combined area of the parcels owned by the petitioner is of nature found in less densely occupied districts. The property cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the condition allowed by the zoning code. The variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will not be a substantial detriment to the adjacent property. The Zoning Board of Appeals heard the petition at a public hearing on June 7 and voted at a special ZBA meeting on June 24, 21 to approve the petition granting the zoning variance four to zero. The petitioner respectfully requests a suspension of the rules due to allow for a council, rules due to allow for a council to vote on this variance.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As specified, we are requesting a suspension of the rules here. The owner has been very patient with us. We actually had to convene the ZBA four times to get a quorum here. Each time the owner came present and was willing, and originally, we had not planned to ask for a suspension, but he is ready to proceed on with the building of the property. We only were able to get a quorum this last time. That's why we're requesting for suspension of the rules on this one.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you, Director McDonald. Manager Crowe, has there been any written, verbal opposition to this?
No, no comments.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to move it forward.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Request to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Busker to move it forward, and a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Chesney for the suspension of the rules. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable and must pass by a two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the suspension of the rules only?
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
And McLanahan.
Aye.
And that passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 11 is the first reading of ordinance 201837. Could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance of the city of Freeport, something's missing there. Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to waive the testing requirement as a part of the process to promote Lieutenant Kurt Timmer to the position of District Chief.
Chief Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very unusual circumstance, just so you're all aware. Back when we had the restructuring of the department, we had a captain's list that was then designated as the district chief's list. We expired that with the additional retirements and the promotions that occurred after that. We had a recent retirement papers that were put in, which requires the promotion of a deputy chief and then a subsequent hire of a promotion of district chief. Since that list is expired, there's a couple things that need to happen here. First off, there has to be, by the firefighters' labor agreement, there's a three-year stipulation. You have to be a lieutenant for three years prior to taking the next rank. We only have one of the nine lieutenants that's able to take that that meets that requirement and meets all minimum qualifications. From there, there's typically written exam and then an oral interview. The written exam and oral interview are all part of the Promotions Act for the firefighters in the state of Illinois, but the written test has no minimum score. So essentially, it's just to separate the pack when there's a pack of applicants. In this case, we could hire IO Solutions to have a validated test, present that test, and this person could just take it in five minutes and be done with it, turn it in. We still have to promote the person because there is no minimum standard, as there is with police testing. So with that, this person is qualified. If we go through IO Solutions, we get these, we have to post the reading material for up to 75 days. We wouldn't get this person in place until probably November, December. We want to kind of get this moving since there is only one person that we have to promote, and we don't want to forego the cost of the validated test as well.
Want to add to this, so that the contract is, because he would be filling into the district chief position anyway, we are required to pay him the up-salary over the period of time. So there is, and then we would be also paying the next person up into the lieutenants. It's part of the contract that they are paid the differential. So what this does is actually promotes the one individual that we have in a position. We have had both the Fire and Police Commission attorney review this, as well as Roxanne. They feel that this is the way to move forward and under our home rule capabilities.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Thank you. Chief, you hit on what was my main question. I just want to confirm and reiterate that. You had indicated that there's only one person that meets the requirements. One of the requirements is regarding time at a prior rank. I think you said three years at a rank. But the main question that I was wondering was, you know, what do we get out of this testing? And it's your representation that there's no minimum standard on this test. So regardless of the score of the individual on this test, because he or she meets the other criteria, they will still be put in this position even if we give that person the test?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the way it is statewide.
Okay. Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, Chief, quick question for you on this. Having actually been in that position when I was in the, on the fire service, I served out of class for 10 months because there was nobody qualified. At what timeframe are we looking at for any of the other lieutenants to be qualified, or to have their three years in? And of those that will have their three years in, would they have the qualifications for that position?
It wouldn't be till November of 2019, and we're kind of addressing that, looking at some stuff internally, and going to meet with the Board of Fire and Police Commission over some of the thoughts we have on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Chief, if they take a test and they perform well, does the testing results carry over to a possible next promotion? Does that have any bearing?
No, the testing process is specific for that position.
Okay. And what is anticipated cost if we were to proceed with the testing phase?
Usually, validated tests, it's a couple thousand dollars just to go through the process, to have a test validated for this. And there's reading materials that have to be posted as well for 75 days, usually three to five books at each station. So to go through the process, there's a lot of materials that have to be purchased, a lot of time that has to take before the testing process takes place, and then for the Fire and Police Commission to meet, to go through the oral interviews. And my, one of my concerns is as well, is you have somebody temporarily managing a shift, and that person, I feel, needs to have ownership of the shift and move it forward too with all this transition that we've had recently.
All right, Mayor.
Sure.
And then to reiterate, regardless of the testing outcome, this person would be installed into this position regardless. So we're talking about efficiency, we're talking about cost.
Yes.
Just given that the testing results is driven by state statute that doesn't allow us to take into consideration a score, which is different than the Police Department.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
And just to follow up, I believe that you said, if the person is put in that position for a temporary basis, they're paid for the position, correct?
That's right. They're paid the differential for that position, and then somebody else has to move into his position, which then creates that out-of-class opportunity, and then they're paid as well.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Thank you. I believe this was addressed with correspondence from Manager Crowe, but just to confirm, the union was fine with this proposal?
Yes, in fact, we've received the actual notification today, about an hour before the meeting, that they have signed off on the memorandum of understanding with this.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, having been in that position myself, and since it's going to be sometime in late 2019, I have to agree with the Chief 100% on the continuity with putting a person in that position. So I would make a motion that we move this forward, and is it time-sensitive or we need to suspend the rules?
I don't believe so, is it? Did you want it suspended?
That's up to you. We could move it a day. Only would be one day is all it would be. Where we could put it into place two weeks from now instead of the Tuesday, I guess it'd be the 17th, so it's up to you.
I'll second it if nobody's seconding it yet.
Okay, no one has done that yet, so thank you. We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Clem to move ordinance 201837 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, item number 12 is the first reading of ordinance 201838. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance granting a special use permit to allow for the operation of a temporary recreational ballpark for property located at 1,001 to 1,003 Lawrence Avenue in Freeport.
Thank you. Director McDonald.
Thank you. On May 7, 2018, an application from Cop Enterprises, 1850 Indian Springs Court, Freeport, was filed with the city's community development department for a special use permit. The relief sought by the documents on file is to allow a little league ball field in a P1 professional use zone district. A park is allowed in a P1 zone district as a special use. Compliance with city ordinance, all adjacent property owners received a certified mailing of the notification of the public hearing to be held on June 14, 2018 at 6:30 PM at City Hall. Notification of the public hearing was published on the city's website and in the Freeport Journal standard. The application has been kept on file in the city's community development department, and a temporary sign was erected on the parcel with information regarding the special use permit and public hearing. No protests or comments were received prior to the public hearing. Findings of fact, the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this zoning code, and that allowance of the special use of the property in such a manner as proposed will not constitute a nuisance or other obstruction to neighboring property. Strict enforcement of the zoning code would result in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions, which are not generally found on other properties in the same zoning district, and that the combined areas of the parcel owned by the petitioner is of nature found in less densely occupied districts. The property cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the zoning code, and the special use, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property in that the petitioner owns the adjacent parcel, thus creating a double lot of a nature found commonly in said neighborhood due to demolition of previously existing structures. The Planning Commission heard the petition at a public hearing on June 14, June 14, 2018 and voted to approve the petition granting the special use five to zero. And we bring it before our council tonight for consideration.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I just, since this is in my ward and it's actually a unique situation, and there's some stipulations involved in putting it in, but basically, what we're finding is with Little League and all the specialty leagues and specialty teams that there are out there today, there are no places left for them to practice. This gentleman here had a lot. He said, hey, I'm, I'd like to put a ball field on so these guys could practice here, and that's basically what he did. At a great cost to him for not only doing it, but the time and everything else of filing to get the permit to move it through. You know, I support this 100%. I really give him credit for going out and doing this. It was done properly, very professionally. There was one person that was against it, that spoke about it, and one of his concerns was the traffic and the parking in the area, which I'd like to work with Dennis on. I think there's some ideas there that was also part of the stipulation that there'd be no parking in that area, so it would block views for any of the kids that were playing. And the other thing was that no kids can be dropped off right at the site. Graciously, Mr. Elliott next door in his lot has allowed the parents and everybody to pull in there, drop off kids, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a great thing that they've done here, and I back it 100%. And I'd like to make a motion to move it forward.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Director McDonald, does this need to be sped up a little bit? Hate to get in the way of baseball.
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Director McDonald, the person that raised the objection, were their, were their concerns addressed appropriately, and do you believe that they were satisfied with the answers?
I don't know that they were satisfied with the answers, but they were addressed. His concerns were where parking was going to be and concern that there might be children running across the street. I think those concerns were addressed by the use of the adjacent parcels, parcel owners, parking lot they've offered to allow people to park in their, in their attending practice.
Yes, thank you. And then, like, the overthrowing and hitting of balls and stuff going into other fields or vacant lots, were there any objections to any problems there?
I don't recall any, any comments about balls. It's a huge lot.
Okay, well, I'm in favor of it. I just want to make sure all the concerns were addressed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Director McDonald, who would be, who's going to be responsible for the upkeep?
That would be the parcel owner, and that's Cop Enterprises.
Okay, so they would be in charge of cutting the grass and keeping it tipped-off condition, should we say?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Keister for ordinance 201838 to be moved to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Next is item number 13, which is the adoption of Resolution 201837. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving a service agreement with Arrow Group, Inc.
Thank you. Chief Barklow.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to kind of explain what this exactly is with the help of IT Director Sutman. The state of Illinois is the sole provider, sole source for the law enforcement agency's data system. We call that LEED system.
When I was in the, on the fire service, I served out of class for ten months because there was nobody qualified. At what timeframe are we looking at for any of the other lieutenants to be quali, or to have their three years in? And of those that will have their three years in, would they have the qualifications for that position?
It wouldn't be till November of 2019, and we're kind of addressing that, looking at some stuff internally, and going to meet with the Board of Fire Police Commission over some of the thoughts we have on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Chief, if they take a test and they perform well, does the testing results carry over to a per, possible next promotion? Does that have any bearing?
Uh, no. The testing process is specific for that position.
Okay. And what is the anticipated cost if we were to proceed with the testing phase?
Usually validated tests, it's a couple thousand dollars just to go through the process, to have a test validated for this. And there's reading materials that have to be posted as well for seventy-five days, usually three to five books at each station. So to go through the process, there's a lot of materials that have to be purchased, a lot of time that has to take before the testing process takes place, and then for the Fire and Police Commission to meet, to go through the oral interviews. And my, one of my concerns is as well, is you have somebody temporarily managing a shift, and that person I feel needs to have ownership of the shift and move it forward too, with all this transition that we've had recently.
Follow me.
Sure. And then to reiterate, regardless of the, the testing outcome, this person would be installed into this position regardless. So, we're, we're talking about efficiency, we're talking about cost.
Yes.
Just given that the testing results is driven by state statute that doesn't allow us to take into consideration a score which is different than the police department.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Clem.
And just to follow up, I believe that you said, if the person is put in that position for a temporary basis, they're paid for the position.
Correct.
That's right. They're, they're paid the differential for that position, and then somebody else has to move into his position, which then creates that out-of-class opportunity, and then they're paid as well.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanahan.
Thank you. I believe this was addressed with correspondence from Manager Crowe, but just to confirm, the union was fine with this proposal?
Yes, in fact, we've received the actual notification today, about an hour before the meeting, that they have signed off on the memorandum of understanding this, with this.
Okay. Mayor?
Alderman Keister.
Yes, having been in that position myself, and since it's going to be sometime in late 2019, I have to agree with the chief a hundred percent on the continuity with putting a place, person in that position. So I would make a motion that we move, move this forward, and is it time-sensitive, or we need to suspend the rules?
I don't believe so, is it? Did you want it suspended?
Uh, that, that's up to you. We could move it a day, only would be one day is all it would be. Where we could put it into place on, two weeks from now, instead of the Tuesday, I guess it'd be the seventeenth, so it's up to you.
I'll second it if nobody's seconding it.
Okay. Yep, no one had done that yet, so thank you. We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Clem, to move ordinance 201837 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, item number twelve is the first reading of ordinance 201838. Madam Clerk, would you please read this for the record?
An ordinance granting a special use permit to allow for the operation of a temporary recreational ballpark for property located at 1001 to 1003 Loris Avenue in Freeport.
Thank you. Director McConnel?
Thank you. On May 7th, 2018, an application from Cop Enterprises, 1850 Indian Springs Court, Freeport, was filed with the, the city's Community Development Department for a special use permit. The relief sought by the documents on file is to allow a little league ball field in a P1 professional use zone district. A park is allowed in a P1 zone district as a special use. Compliance with city ordinance, all adjacent property owners received a certified mailing of the notification of the public hearing to be held on June 14th, 2018, at 6:30 PM at City Hall. Notification of the public hearing was published on the city's website and in the Freeport Journal Standard. And the application has been kept on file in the city's Community Development Department, and a temporary sign was erected on the parcel with information regarding the special use permit and public hearing. No protests or comments were received prior to the public hearing. Findings of fact, the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code, in that allowance of the special use of the property in, in such a manner as proposed will not constitute a nuisance or other obstruction to neighboring property. Strict enforcement of the zoning code would, would result in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions, which are not generally found on other properties in the same zoning district, in that the combined areas of the parcel owned by the petitioner is of nature found in less densely occupied districts. The property cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the zoning code, and the special use, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property in that the petitioner owns the adjacent parcel, thus creating a double lot of a nature found commonly in said neighborhood due to demolition of previously existing structures. The Planning Commission heard the petition at a public hearing on June 14th, June 14th, 2018, and voted to approve the petition granting the special use five to zero. And we bring it before council tonight for consideration.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor?
Alderman Clem.
Uh, I just, since this is in my ward, and, and it's actually a unique situation, and there's some stipulations involved in putting it in, but basically what we're finding is with little league and all the specialty leagues and specialty teams that there are out there today, there are no places left for them to practice. This gentleman here had a lot. He said, hey, I'm good, I'd like to put a ball field on so these guys could practice here, and that's basically what he did. Out of a great cost to, to him for not only doing it, but the time and everything else of filing to get the permit to move it through. You know, I support this a hundred percent. I, I really give him credit for going out and doing this. It was done properly, very professionally. There was one person that was against it, that spoke, spoke about it, and one of his concerns was the traffic and the parking in the area, which I'd like to work with Dennis on. I think there's some ideas there. That was also part of the stipulation that there'd be no parking in that area, so it would block views for any of the kids that were playing. And the other thing was that no kids can be dropped off right at the site. The graciously, Mr. Elliott next door in his lot has allowed the parents and everybody to pull in there, drop off kids, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a great thing that they've done here, and I back it a hundred percent. And I'd like to make a motion to move it forward.
Second.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Chesney.
Director McDonald, this need to be sped up a little bit. Hate to get in the way of baseball.
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you. Director McDonald, the person that raised the objection, were their, were their concerns addressed appropriately, and do you believe that they were satisfied with the answers?
I don't know that they were satisfied with the answers, but they were addressed. His concerns were where parking was going to be, and concern that there might be children running across the street. I think those concerns were addressed by the use of the adjacent parcels, parcel owners, parking lot they've, they've offered to allow people to park in their, in their attending practice.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, like, the overthrowing and hitting of balls and stuff going into other fields or vacant lots, were there any objections to any problems there?
I don't recall any, any comments about balls. It's, it's a huge lot.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of it. I just want to make sure all the concerns were addressed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Ross.
Uh, Director McDonald, who would be, who's going to be responsible for the upkeep?
That would be the parcel owner, and that's Cop Enterprises.
Okay, so they would be in charge of cutting the grass and keeping it tipped up, should we say?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Keister, for ordinance 201838 to be moved to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Next is item number thirteen, which is the adoption of resolution 201837. Madam Clerk, would you please read this for the record?
Resolution of the City of Freeport authorizing and approving a service agreement with Arrow Group, Inc.
Thank you. Chief Barkalow?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to kind of explain what this exactly is with the help of IT Director Sutton. The state of Illinois is the sole provider, sole source for the law enforcement agency's data system. We call that LEED system. It, we use that to obtain criminal histories and vehicle information, driver's license information, and wanted subject. The state of Illinois, the state of Illinois is transitioning the lines that connect to different agencies from T1, which is kind of copper lines, to the I fiber, the high-speed fiber lines. We were taking a look at this, and together, along with my staff, we request the approval of the city council to enter into a professional service agreement with Arrow as our provider, and that what they would do is provide the final connection service to LEEDs for an amount of two, $250 a month. You know, Arrow is a majority provider for all city communication services and network operations already, so a lot of that infrastructure's already in place. They also agreed to provide the hardware connection, maintenance, and tech support for the Freeport Police Department. And, you know, we had this option of a five-year contract, so the contract would, would lock this price into place for the next five years. If, if there's any other, you know, questions, I'd be, try, I'd try to answer them. If not, IT Director Sutton probably could.
Sure.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Chief, what were, what was our cost prior to this?
Prior to this, I, I believe that the cost was 230 a month, and so it, it has risen just a, a small amount. I, I don't have those papers in front of me, but it's, or, or very, it's very close to the same, is what we're providing for.
Kurt, do you have those? We, because we went out for bid on this.
Um, I don't have the exact numbers, but it's an increase because we're going from the old copper T1 line to fiber. It's part of the next generation, I believe.
Okay.
It's the reason for that.
Madam Chair?
Alderman Busker.
Yes, with, with the, going to the fiber, is this going to get that information back to our officers faster for their safety, or is it about the same speed as the copper wire was?
I think it's, it's going to be faster and more advanced, yes. So it's, I mean, and we're talking about, you know, very critical information that, that we need. I think this is an advancement that all, every agency is probably going to end up going to. Arrow, I think, has been a, a solid partner in the past with us. That, some, some of the prices that we compared was, was, is much better, and I think preferable, that, that Arrow would be it.
Madam Chair, follow up.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt resolution R. 28, 201837.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alderman McLanahan.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, you mentioned that we did go out for bids on this. How many bids did we get back on it?
You talked to both Frontier and Arrow on this, correct?
Oh, we got quotes.
Quotes.
So we looked at Frontier and Comcast.
Okay.
And this was the low bidder, and it's also, since they're providing us fiber for all those, for the city, as we go forward.
Yeah, my follow-up question. Good job.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you. And is this regarding the five-year contract, then? A five-year contract with this?
Five-year contract, yes it is. Locks us into place with a five-year contract. It does have the one, and I'll bring it, Attorney Zito did have one concern. Arrow, on the separation, they, they had a minimum number of years that they wanted us to do, and, and for separation. So it does lock us in for, what, two years into it, but it was, there's a sick, there's a cost if we decide to leave before the, the end of the contract.
Thank you.
Kurt, did you want to add something on that?
I think we all got it.
Okay. Any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Clem?
Uh, one other thing to keep in mind, or remember that we just also became partners with Arrow. Arrow is, is preying us for usage on the Two Towers, and that's when set it back up. So it is a good partnership with a company that we do business with already.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Keister, for the adoption of resolution 201837. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Ross?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Keister?
Aye.
Chesney?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanahan?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Department head reports. Finance?
Thank you, Mayor. I have four items I'd like to bring to council's attention tonight. The first one is that our auditors finished up their fieldwork last Friday, and we seem to be moving right along. Everything's looking good. They'll be back sometime in mid-July for one day, possibly two, just as some follow-up. But they're, they're ahead of schedule as far as completing the audit. The second item is that actuary for the police and fire pension funds has also been, has also started, and that's moving forward as well. At the next, the third item I have for council is that the next council meeting, I'll be submitting a number of financial reports and the June investment report for your review. And the last item I have is that the, as maybe you may be aware, that the Supreme Court ruled on the South Dakota Way, Wayfair decision on internet sales. The Illinois Department of Revenue is estimating that for a full, full year, full fiscal year for them, that they're anticipating about $200 million in new revenue. Of that amount, the state would keep eighty percent, or about $160 million, and the remaining twenty percent would be divided between the city of Chicago, which would get twenty percent of the twenty percent. The regional transit authority get ten percent, Metro East Transit District could get about six tenths of a percent. 3.15 million dollars would go to the Illinois, Build Illinois Fund, and the remaining money, about, I'm figuring about $28 million, would be divided among all the other municipalities based on their population versus the state, the state, state total population. Based on, using some round numbers, next year we can anticipate approximately $53,000 in additional revenue by this ruling.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Director McDonald?
No report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works?
We've got the paper up and running again, and we're going to pick up where we left off when it started on fire, which is down on Island Street. When they're done with that, we're going to pick up a couple alleys if we've got some extra asphalt. And then I believe we're going to start looking a little bit into the, the vault there on Chicago. It's got a little, it's, it's struggling a bit, and the sidewalk on top of it's beginning to pop a little bit hard. Curbs beginning to fall apart in that area as well, due to the, the limestone walls failing. So, once we're done with Island, we're going to begin looking at filling that vault.
Thank you. Fire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just reminder to the public about fireworks safety, and even though we do have a lot of legal sparklers, things of that nature, we just need to keep it away from clothes and just be responsible. If you do have those things out and about, keep a bucket of water, a hose closed. We just want to make sure everybody stays safe and enjoys their Fourth of July.
Thank you. Police?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'm happy to report that we're, we're done with the Stevenson County Fair with no major problems. On the preference side, I'm not happy that fair's over, but no issues at the fair, which is always a good thing. And just to, you know, to add to what Chief Allen said, is just urge everyone to be safe for the Fourth of July. Think a minute before you do something, and everyone will be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Sewer?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Nothing to report tonight.
And IT? Nothing. All right. That concludes our department heads. Manager Crowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple things. As Alderman Ross and I, along with Director Carr, met with Army Corps of Engineers, three and a half hour meeting on Friday in Rock Island. A lot of representatives from the community in the Third Ward believed it was a useful and informative meeting for everybody's attendance. I appreciate all those, and I want to especially thank Reverend Fungus, who helped identify the people that we should be attending that meeting. So, we, the, for Greater Freeport Partnership, as advertising their department heads, went advertising, went out this weekend. So they're looking to fill the three department head positions. Rebecca is already in place, and she's hired Tess as her executive assistant. But the other three positions are being advertised both locally as well as in national organizations, and hoping to have those filled by the end of the, end of July. Prohibition Night is on the fourteenth, so you'll see a lot of twenties cars and people dressed in the twenties. And, and then fireworks is going to be this coming up weekend out at the Stevenson County Fair.
Thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on to Chief's comment about the fair, and thank the hundreds of volunteers that it takes to put on the Stevenson County Fair of a year. And so, you know, without having the volunteers, it'd be very difficult to get a lot of things done around here. And so with that, if, if you could mark your calendars for the last Sunday in July, which is the 29th, from nine till two, we're having the river cleanup, which is out at the Rock Hollow, and they usually have hundreds of volunteers that show up for that, and they clean up. I believe last year it was 120 miles of river. So lots of, lots of things pulled from the river, so if anyone's available during that timeframe, I know that they very much appreciate that. So that is from nine till two, and lunch is also provided. And then on Saturday, the seventh, the Yes Club will present a rally for peace celebration with music and food. It's free to the public, and it is from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Crape Park Music Shell. So if you would like to avail yourself to that, I know that Mr. C. is working hard on that, and to have involvement would be great. And then also, we've been receiving lots of calls concerning the mosquitoes. The mosquito number, in case anyone needs it, is 800-942-2555. And just to remind you that the city does, is not responsible for the mosquitoes, even though we all hate them. The mosquito abatement is their own taxing body, and the city does not do that contract. But to let you know that tomorrow night will be an application for the mosquitoes, and they're actually going to be using a helicopter for better applications. So expect to see that tomorrow night. And one last thing, just to have a safe and happy Independence Day. And on to... That'll be council report, which will be Alderman Ross first.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Smith?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Busker?
Ah, yes, I just want to make note about the mosquitoes to the listening audience. If you do have any standing water in your, in your yard, try your best to get rid of it, or if you see someone that does have it, tell them to get rid of it, or call the nuisance inspector, because that's where a lot of these mosquitoes come from, is stagnant water.
Thank you. Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you, Your Honor. This Thursday, we have a Neighborhood Watch meeting for Ward Six at 6:00 PM at the Schwartz Funeral Home. We'll have a lively discussion with Tom Kopansky speaking on water sewer issues and the new well diggings, and along with Manager Crowe, hopefully, will be speaking. He gave me a look. I'm not sure if that's going to happen or not. I also want to remind the City of Freeport that July 7th will be Light Up the Sky at the county fairgrounds. There will be food available. It's not being played to music this year, but it sounds like it's going to be a good time, so hopefully they'll have a good turnout. And one more item on the mosquitoes. A lot of us are fairly pale. I think we've had a lot of bloodletting because of the mosquito population in Freeport, and I'm glad to hear they'll be spraying. I think I fielded about two hours worth of phone calls of people mad because of the mosquitoes today. I know a few of the other alder people, including Alderman McLanahan, jumped in on a few of those conversations, and I appreciate that. Former Alderman Helms also gave some information, so we would have a little ammunition to tell the people that it's, no, it's not our fault, that we can give them the right phone numbers to call. And I encourage everyone in their neighborhoods, if you have a, a situation where you have an overabundance of the mosquitoes, to have yourself and your neighbors call. They do count those calls, and they look at how many different households are reporting the abundance of mosquitoes in certain neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Keister?
Yes, Mayor, a couple of quick things. First of all, the last few days, we've been reminded that we are in summer and just how hot and humid it can get around here. Just a very important, quick reminder, children and pets do not survive very long in cars closed up in this weather. So please, do not leave pets or ca, or children in the car, because they won't last long if you do. And if you're going to put your pets outside, make sure you kind of limit the time in this heat when they're out there. And if you're going to leave them out there for a while, make sure they've got some shade and some water, because they deserve the consideration, same consideration that we get. One final thing I have noticed, and I believe it's against city ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, I've noticed a lot of people mowing grass out in the street. I've seen a lot of grass out in the street. Being a motorcycle enthusiast, biker, whatever you want to call it, I pay attention to that, because that stuff, if it gets damp, if you're on a bicycle, motorcycle, or anything on two wheels, your chances of going down are very, very good. So it's not just a cosmetic thing, it's a safety thing. Please, people, do not mow your grass out in the street, because I don't want to fall down because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Chesney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Freeport High School NJ ROTC air rifle marksmanship team is in need of some space. They have been occupying the same space for some time. For those that don't know, they're a nationally recognized team and very accomplished. Some of the parameters that they're looking for is 4,500 to 5,000 square feet that is rectangular, 24-hour access, that the key will be kept with the coach, warm in the winter, cool in the summer, restroom facilities. Electricity would be nice, they need electricity, internet access that would be available as a guest, and of no cost. And they would occupy this about, it's, the sport is about 11 months a year, and they can, inquiries are those that are interested in helping out our Freeport High School, they can contact 815-232-0704, extension 0706. And I'll also ask Director McDonald to place this on the city website or the city Facebook. We do have some available space in Freeport. We see these buildings all the time. I think it would be a nice opportunity to support our local high school. There is a need, and they are an accomplished group of young adults, and they need our help. So if you know anybody that has some space, please reach out to the school district, and they would be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clem?
Just a reminder of, First Ward Neighborhood Watch is on the 23rd. And just to echo what the, the chief said, I want you, all you guys on July 4th, as you're celebrating my birthday, to be safe. So, there won't be fireworks on the 4th, but please also make sure you do schedule in the 7th. And we really give credit to the group that has come forward for that, and we thank them for that.
Alderman McLanahan? I think you all covered it pretty well. No further comment. All right, thank you. Public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to item number nineteen, which is the executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C3, the selection of a person to fill a public office is defined in this act, including a vacancy in a public office, when the public body is given power to appoint under law or ordinance, or the disciplined performance or removal of the occupant of a public office, when the public body is given power to remove the occupant under law or ordinance. Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C21, discussion of minutes lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes, or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06, with action to follow that item.
Thank you. Is there a motion to leave open session?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Brasshaw. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Ross?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Keister?
Aye.
Chesney?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanahan?
Aye.